Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, July 28th special called meeting of the Stafford County School Board. We're beginning at 5:30 this evening. As has been our recent norm in these new times, I'm going to ask us to do our call to order. Ms. Healy, I would ask you to start for our roll call identifying ourselves in our district.
Patricia Healy, Rock Hill District.
Susan Randall, George Washington District.
Elizabeth Warner, Griffiths Wide Water District.
Irene Hollerback, the Acquahia District.
Holly Hazard, Hartwood District.
Pamela Young, Garrisonville.
Sarah Chase, Falmouth.
All right, we have a quorum. All seven of us are present and together in the room tonight. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda this evening?
Motion to approve, second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Prior to moving to the important agenda item about Stafford's return to school plan, I'm going to invoke the chairman's privilege to address a broader topic this evening of civility and civil debate. Civility is based on the golden rule that we should treat others as we wish to be treated. In government, it means conducting the public's business with respect for other elected officials, staff, and residents. In civil discourse, opponents make their arguments on the merits of the case rather than engaging in personal attacks. In Fisher and Yuri's excellent book, Getting to Yes!, the sentiment is summarized as "Attack the Problem, Not the Person." Our primary responsibility is to represent our constituents' best interests, and it's amazing how often that responsibility is impeded by a lack of civility. Countless hours are wasted in email wars and public debates that have nothing to do with the business at hand and everything to do with rudeness and one-upmanship. When we care only about ourselves but are expecting the worst from others, there's no end to arguing, fighting, squabbling, accusing, distrust, and outright rudeness. When this occurs in government, the impact is that the public's business is sidelined and individual agendas are highlighted. In that case, everybody loses. Let's not waste time on petty squabbles, but let's focus on the broader public good. As a good friend once said, "Be passionate, but not rude." Believe me, our schools, our communities, our country, and our world are facing huge problems that we need, that need our focus and attention. We are much better when we're working together. Let's practice some grace. Let's listen, and let us attack the problems and not each other. And with that, I have a statement that Ms. Young would like to share.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Chairwoman Hazard. I never regret a day in life. Best days give memories. Good days give happiness. Bad days give experience. And worse days give lessons. I learned through emails that some of my comments were heartfelt and some deemed inappropriate. That was not my intent. For that, I am sincerely sorry.
Thank you. Like to move on to our next action item, which is our endorsement of the superintendent's amended return to school plan for Stafford County Public Schools. Before I'm going to entertain a motion, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Kizner for any additional slides or anything that has been added to either this packet or newly gathered information.
Okay, thank you. There are two, well, one modification to Slide 10, and then this morning, and they're both, and then there's an additional slide to Slide 11. This is a result of our morning superintendent's meeting, state superintendent's meeting, and Dr. Peak, who's the lead epidemiologist for the Virginia Department of Health, spoke to all the superintendents this morning. So it reflects some very current information, although incomplete. So should I just go into that now, Ms. Hazard?
Yes, if you could call out the slides so that in case we can put it up on the...
Sure. Okay. So what you have is the handout of just Slide 10 and 11. 10, I just want to, so also this morning, speaking to many superintendents the last week, but listening to other school divisions talk about their plans and some considerations, I just wanted to add two things that will be part of the evaluation as we move forward. So one is the timeline for COVID-19 testing results and tracing procedures. It appears that it's not uniform across the state. Some localities are able to get results faster than others, but some people, even on this panel, have experienced one-week delays, if not longer. That is a huge concern, especially if we have a concern of somebody being tested positive, and then, of course, the tracing becomes more challenging. On the academic side, I did want to mention, I added, I put it in italics in a sense, staffing limitations. And I just want to share you information that I think is really relevant. It's, it's something that we've been monitoring, but I want to give you, two weeks ago compared to now, what we're seeing with our staffing. So this is just, well, let me just tell you two things. I'm going to give you the last two, but just from June 15th and why I selected June 15th, because that is the date by our policy and contract people are supposed to notify us if they're not planning to return. So since June 15th, we've had 50 total resignations slash leave of abscences, 39 teachers, five paraprofessionals, and six other service staff. In the past two weeks, we've had 15 resignations, 10 teachers, six cited COVID concerns, two paraprofessionals both cited COVID concerns, three service staff, and additionally, five new teachers have rescinded their acceptance to Stafford County Public Schools. I mention this because, again, this is just a, something you won't find on a health data website, but it's something that school systems are obviously concerned about. And so I just add those as part of the evaluation. I do want to mention, as already indicated, Dr. Peak spent about an hour this morning with the superintendents. So I've been saying for the last couple of meetings, they're developing this data dashboard, okay? And the data dashboard is not fully developed, it's not public, but we did receive more information today than we have received in the past. Data profiles will be regional. There are some concerns about that. The regions are relatively large. It's not just the Rappahannock Area Health Department. Matter of fact, we're part of the Northern Virginia Health Department, school systems in Southwest Virginia, in the most southern corners, southern, southwest corners that are part of, almost border with Kentucky and Tennessee. They go all the way up to Roanoke, so there's different profiles. You might have seen in the news, there seems to be different, different opinions about if you should regionalize the health data or if you look at the state health data and not look at regions. We've already seen in Virginia, certain areas were high, they've, they've modified. Other areas that we would use to call low, like Southwest Virginia, South Side of Virginia, we already know what's happening in the Hampton Roads area. Now, those areas are having many more positive cases. So the components of the data dashboard, and again, this is something that's still being refined, but we got more information. So burden would be looking at how's it impacting your local hospitals with beds and ICU admissions, trends over the last 14 days, and transmission extent, and this is what I've been telling you, that there's going to be like, in a sense, will be categorized as a region, okay? So we've been told that we could work with our local health department to try to get more specific, if not just for Stafford, at least the school, the communities that are a part of the Rappahannock Area Health Department. So it's substantial, moderate, low, and none. What we've also were told, employees are higher risk than students. However, still learning about children, this is a quote from her, "This is new, and we do not have models to follow." A question was asked today by a superintendent, "Are you suggesting that if we were able to see our results on our data dashboard on September 28th, that would be what we could expect right after Labor Day?" That school system obviously was opening up after Labor Day. And the answer was, in quotes, "Does VDHD does not have a crystal ball. The situation remains fluid, and school systems should evaluate every week." So that is just very current information that I felt should be part of your discussion, deliberation. That's all I need to add. Thank you.
Are there any questions from board members concerning the information just presented by Dr. Kizner? All right, hearing none. All right, next, we're going to be talking about the, the school plan. I did say that I would give board members, before we started in on any motion or motions, to, if anyone would like to say anything very brief broadly about either the process or just where they're at this evening, if you would like, anyone, anybody would like to make a statement? Anybody? Yes. Ms. Young.
So I spoke to several individuals this weekend, read a lot of emails, heard a lot of your complaints and cries, and you heard mine. I talked to several of you via email and over the phone and via text. I also spoke to many of you, your children, because I think it's important to speak to the children. And thank you for allowing me to speak to them and make them smile. I wanted to read an email from Sarah Ames, who wanted me to read it as a student voice, and it's important to her. So here I go. Sarah wrote, and I quote, "This email is sent on behalf of concerned CGS seniors at Colonial Forge High School site. In light of the many newly proposed SCPS back-to-school plan, we have some concerns to share with you in regards to the upcoming school year. It should be noted that many of us will be 18 in this upcoming year and are capable of making informed suggestions and decisions. How are you ensuring that grades truly reflect students' coursework and effort instead of students' adaptability to the virtual environment? What checks will be in place to ensure that students are meeting the standards typically expected without the external influences of limited access to technology and the possibility of cheating? How will the virtual classes be synchronized with the in-person curriculum to ensure that course objectives are met? Additionally, what is the discrepancy between electives offered via the all-virtual plan vice the hybrid plan? How will you ensure that the academic rigor and objectives of AP classes are kept intact despite all at least partial time in a virtual environment? What are the updates plans for providing eating lunch at school? In the case of a positive test, how do you plan on contact tracing, travel students with intermix with student population from different schools? Success for this year looks like a group who works together to meet the challenges and educational goals before us with everyone happy and healthy throughout the school year. We thank you for your involvement in our learning and our concerns. We look forward to hearing your answers to these questions. Very respectfully, concerned members of the seniors class of the Commonwealth Governor's School of Colonial Forge High School," end quote. And I also just spoke to my daughter, that's a doctor in anesthesia. She takes care of COVID patients, and she is in the Air Force. And she was the last person I spoke to before coming here. So all my children graduated from Stafford schools, and I know how invested the staff is and how parents want to help. And I hope the businesses, as well as the community, support the SCPS families. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any other comments? All right, I'm just going to make one overall comment, and then we'll start in. I just wanted to sort of provide a big picture here. All seven of us were elected to the school board, and all of us got involved in that because of education policy and our caring about public education. If I was focused on what I think I was elected to do, which is education policy, I would be endorsing a plan, if I could, that focuses on in-face instruction and engagement. I've heard your cry from this, from student to staff to family. However, I think the decision that we make tonight is not an education decision, it's a health decision. And to me, unfortunately, and I have watched other superintendents who have had to pivot to new ways of instruction, have all noted that we do not have metrics. It appears they are in, they are being developed, but for your local school boards, to me, it's a little late. And I'm just going to make that statement. I think that we need that guidance on those metrics earlier and that we needed to have them before this. Watching four or five large school districts all talk about creating committees to come up with metrics on health in their schools, to me, is not, we will do it, we will rise to that occasion, but I have to tell you, tonight, it's hard to vote on something as a school board member that I do not believe is in the best interest of our students, because I want them to have the best opportunities. I know that our staff and our students will rise to the occasion, but I cannot sit here tonight and say that I think it is the best. It is the best with the hand we are being dealt with. And I would really like to have the health community come up and help us make good decisions on how we can get our students back into classrooms or into more engaged. I just feel like I need to make that statement for me personally, because I really do believe the, this decision is not exactly in education. It impacts education, but it is being driven by health. All right, so moving on, Dr. Chase.
Yes, so I have drafted several motions, and I would go ahead and like to make them. I've asked, given them to our clerk so that she could put them up. I will make the motion if I have a second, and then we can discuss, and maybe there will be amendments or not. So my first motion is, "With the exception of students in certain exempted categories, and this is for high school and middle school, with the exception of students in certain exempted categories to be approved by the school board at the August 11th school board meeting, instruction will be 100% virtual until after the winter break of the 2020-2021 school year. The hybrid model will not be offered at the middle and high school levels. An evaluation of health and academic data will be done before winter break to determine whether a return to in-school instruction is feasible for the remainder of the year. In any event, families will have the option to elect to stay 100% virtual for the entire school year. In addition, the school board directs the superintendent to present a preliminary evaluation of the virtual instructional model and analysis of the academic data on October 27th. At this time and until further notice, only extracurricular activities that can be conducted virtually are permitted. During the school day, buildings will be open, staffed, and available to provide virtual services for families. So administrators, counselors, and social workers will be on the premises."
Second.
All right, Dr. Chase, I'm going to give you first, as the, excuse me, as the motion maker, if there's anything you would, to give you the first.
Sure. Sure. So all along, and many of you have heard me say this, I've been concerned about the high school and middle school plans because of them moving in the building between different classes. And it hasn't been clear to me how we reduce the transmission of the virus and the disruption to school with every time there's an outbreak, suddenly we have to shut down six classes and send them to quarantine. And so I have really struggled with this. I don't see how we can do it otherwise. And so that was kind of what, what drove me with respect to that. With respect to extracurriculars, I don't know how we can justify providing extracurriculars in person if we can't provide instruction in person. And I think, I think, and then the hybrid model, I think it will be very difficult for staffing to be trying to have two different models that we are trying to schedule for at different points during the year. Thank you.
Ms. Young, do you have any comment as the secondor?
Just that I believe that, as I've always said, the middle and the high school, we cannot accurately keep all the kids at six-feet distance with mask in the hallways of the middle and high schools.
All right, Ms. Hollerback.
Can you repeat that motion, please?
Yep. So, "With the exception of students in certain exempted categories to be approved by the school board at the August 11th school board meeting, instruction will be 100% virtual until after the winter break of the 2020-2021 school year. The hybrid model will not be offered at the middle and high school levels. An evaluation of health and academic data will be done before winter break to determine whether a return to in-school instruction is feasible for the remainder of the year. In any event, families will have the option to elect to stay 100% virtual for the entire school year. In addition, the school board directs the superintendent to present a preliminary evaluation of the virtual instructional model and analysis of the academic data on October 27th. At this time and until further notice, only extracurricular activities that can be conducted virtually are permitted. During the school day, buildings will be open, staffed, and available to provide virtual services for families."
I am seeing it now for the first time.
Why are we not addressing elementary schools? How many motions are there? Okay, so the next motion is for elementary schools. What, where did the people, at this time, until further notice, only extracurricular activities that can be conducted virtually are going to be permitted?
It just was part of, part of the whole high school, middle school program.
No extracurricular activities? I mean, that's kind of, that's really broad.
Okay. Would, I mean, we can certainly do a second amendment. I'm, I'm open to, I'm open to amending the motion.
Okay, so, so we're making a determination about the rest of the school year before we even get there?
Just the first semester, just the first half.
Okay.
Just until winter break.
So I just, I just wanted to clarify.
We have to be careful when we use nine weeks and semesters, because we are in the, largely in the four-by-four, so we need to kind of refer to things with dates, just so that we can keep some consistency.
Right. So I guess I'm going to defer to you and ask you, what is your opinion on this? I mean, this, this...
My opinion is, the plan that I presented is the plan that I feel is the best for the school division, but I respect that the board could amend it.
Okay, so, okay, I will, I will wait till the next motion to make further comments. Thank you.
All right, any other comments? Dr. Warner?
The Major League Baseball opened four days ago. They've already had to shut down. They have access to testing. There's a great risk with the extracurricular activities, because they tend to be activities where kids want to congregate together, and they want to, and they are doing things, many times it's contact. There's, it's much harder for us to manage than it is in-class phase time. So it does, you know, I think until we know what COVID is going to do, and the, and the one thing is the director, the Virginia Department of Health pointed out, we don't have a crystal ball. We can't predict that. And if our goal is keeping kids safe, then we need to just put a freeze on these extracurricular activities unless they can be done virtually until we have some more data.
Ms. Randall.
So, of course, I'm, in looking at our motion versus Dr. Kizner's motion, we have the same date for the health and academic data analysis. We kept that. As far as the holding out till the January or after winter break timeline, we have, in having opportunities to talk individually with the other board members, we also know that should information, health data, look better, it would just be two members bringing up that we would like it to be looked at or considered for others. So I want to put that, while Dr. Kizner had in his November 5th, with a possible hybrid on November 11th, we're not saying we're going to, we're going for as long and as safe for, for scheduling and planning purposes. But if he brings us forth information, if we're following information that says those November dates are better, we don't have a problem up here. We know that the situation is fluid. We know that all the information that we've been working on since May, June, and even into July, everything we have planned for, thought about, and scheduled, has really gone out the window. So we're going as long and as far as we can in thought, but in hope that something will change and we can say something sooner. But we just want to put out something for teachers and staff to work long-range planned in hopes that, you know, we can provide the best services for our students. As for the extracurriculars, we are aware of the VHSL ruling yesterday, and we are aware that sports could pick up in sometime in December. And we are aware that should our health situation in our area look okay, that that is also something that we can bring back before the board. So while we put this out there now, just please know that we, we're not heartless about this. We're trying to allow as much opportunity and scheduling as possible. And we do hold hope. We do hold hope. But we just have to be as thoughtful as possible to forward planning. Thank you.
Ms. Healy.
Thank you. Dr. Chase, are you going to address the question about if someone wants virtual, can we make it clear here that anyone who wants virtual will be able to have virtual for the entire year, even if we do end up offering, you know, in-school instruction? I don't want there to be any confusion on the part of the, the community that if we were in a situation where this board determined it was feasible to, to return, that there would be any forcing of, of families that have elected for virtual to come back?
Right. I believe, I believe the motion says, "In any event, families will have the option to elect to stay 100% virtual for the entire school year."
Okay. And then the other question has to do with respect to these, the students in the exempted categories?
Yeah, I have a, a follow-up motion dealing with exempted categories, motion three.
Okay.
Okay, well, if that, if that relates to this, I, to me, it would be... Okay. Well, if that, if that relates to this, I, to me, it would be helpful to, to see that.
Sure.
Before voting, unless we're going to vote on it all together.
I think we should do them separate.
Okay. Well, then if we could maybe make that part of this?
Sure. That would be fine.
I, I do have one question for Dr. Kizner. May I?
Go ahead.
Okay.
Make sure you have your mic on.
It is. Dr. Kizner, for, we currently have the high school starting quite late. Is there any way that we could bring them back early for their instruction time? As instead, I mean, if, you know, even on your 100% virtual, can we just go ahead and roll that time back for those kids so that they don't have to go so late in the day?
Okay. So, maybe, maybe I'm not understanding the question, what you're saying. So, they start, they start August 31st.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm talking time of day, hour of day. So, instead of starting at 10 to 11, could they start at eight and just to get their day going? I mean, there's not the transportation challenge because we're not moving even half of a school.
Well.
So, I think it would be, especially if the virtual teachers could just go ahead and start their day.
So, two, just two thoughts. One, again, depending on the board's motion and on exempt students, the vulnerable students, I believe, should be at school. I believe we can meet all the health mitigation that requires our transportation to have elementary, middle, and high school runs. We said last week, still part of our plan, that this is a seamless transition. So, when we go to a hybrid, and I still take the position that we will go to a hybrid, maybe I'm more optimistic, that this allows us to go to a hybrid based on the schedule that was on in last week's, actually, the last two presentations on the 14th and 21st. So, for transportation purposes, and also to get us to a schedule when we go to hybrid, which, again, I think we all realize, unless things change drastically, is being driven by the transportation limitations of how many people we have on the school bus. So, I, I personally don't see any reason to have the high school go earlier based on those two factors.
So, we were going to have either motion three or just added to motion one. Ms. Hall, can you pull that up? Yep. So.
If I could just add one thing, I haven't heard many of these comments, but I heard a few that I would also want to make sure I don't forget, that there are some families where they do have children at all different grade levels. And the staggering has been well-received by them. As for parents that will be with their child, not, I know there'll be many that won't be able to. So, to have the stagger of elementary, then middle and high school does give some relief than having all the students and all the children in your home being taught pretty much at the same time. Anyway, I'm sorry, go on.
Go ahead, Dr. Chase. Oh, was there a question over here? Sorry, I'm trying to.
I have, I would like to say something else, but I'll let Dr. Chase go ahead and finish her thought.
So, I, I have, and, and this would be, the reason I pulled it out as a third motion is it would be relevant to both high school and element, middle and elementary. It's, it's all three. And its exempted categories proposed for in-school instruction will be clearly defined and presented to the school board at the August 11th meeting for approval. The plan for exempted categories for in-school instruction shall include, but not be limited to, a maximum number of students permitted at any school site at any given time to be calculated as a percentage of the available space to which the students will be assigned. And, and Dr. Kizner, this is simply because there is some concern that certain schools may have substantially larger numbers of students who fit in exempted categories. And we just, we just feel that it's important that we know, if, if we're trying to mitigate risk, we just want to make sure that we don't have a school where exempted categories could end up being 50% of the school body is in the school, in which case, we could theoretically do hybrid. So, we just want to have a, a sense of what that is.
Yes. So, let me just briefly address that, because this is something that we've been planning for a very long time. An example would be, and I know Dr. Warner had a chance to go with me, would be what we saw at North Stafford, which is 7th through 12th grade, EL children throughout the district being at one location. We do not see the, the picture. There might be where for certain children, it would make much better sense to be at their school. But what we see, what we, if you did go or have a chance to go this week, what you would see is the large room that we, you would know, I wasn't here when it was all lockers, but outside the live herd. And we have 7th to 12th grade children throughout the division. So, the objective is via, because I totally agree with you, the objective is not to put a school where they're pretty much running close to capacity.
Just a comment on the ESL program at North Stafford. I think that's an excellent way to maximize the space because they did bring in those different grade levels. They had 7th through 12th grade, and they did have social distancing. The students were all wearing their masks. Teachers were doing an excellent job pushing blackboards around the room. And it was really quite an excellent experience, and I was really impressed with Dan at the, I can't remember his last name.
Dr. Hornick. Dr. Hornick.
And he, he's there doing an excellent job. That was a very good experience. Ms. Hollerback?
Thank you. So, taking this up now kind of puts me in the same position that I was in last week, which I got heat for. And I'm sorry that people didn't understand what I was saying last week, but I'm going to say it again tonight. Dr. Kizner hasn't seen this. My parents haven't seen this. Our teachers haven't seen any of this. Nobody's been able to opine on this. I can't vote for any changes that our, the public hasn't seen, that our superintendent hasn't seen, that no one has seen. I mean, I'm, I'm ready to vote on Dr. Kizner's plan. And, I mean, time is up. We don't have any more time, so we got, we have to vote on something tonight. So, I won't be supporting any of the new changes. I'm, I want to see Dr. Kizner's plan go forward. I've had a lot of time to think this past week with all of these new cases that are popping up and all of these talking heads that have now changed their minds. Even President Trump has said it's only going to get worse before it gets better. So, I'm sorry if I'm the only person not supporting these changes, but I've changed my mind.
Ms. Healy?
Well, I'd like to thank Dr. Chase for this proposal. I think it reflects a lot of the responses that we've received. Certainly, there have been, I guess you could count them a lot more of the approved Dr. Kizner's plan now, emails that are exactly the same except the signatures. But in addition to those, there have been quite a few from the community. And, and I don't think there is any inherent conflict between this proposal and Dr. Kizner's. I think this refines it some. I think it takes some of the responsibility back in the hands of the school board, and I'm, I'm willing to accept that responsibility. I think that that's part of my responsibility to, you know, my constituents in the community to be looking at this, to be evaluating, to, to have the assessment, and to be, as Ms. Randall has articulated, ready to move if we are in a position to do it. I think there is definitely consensus that we're not able to do it now. And, and I would not have said that several weeks ago because I think there was, it was a different, different data available, different information. So, I, I'm going to support this. I think in, in, in theory, you know, there, there's really not that much difference. It's all virtual to start, and it's, it's just in the implementation. I appreciate the, bringing the special exemptions back to this board because I'm very interested and concerned that we do have equity among these exceptions, that, that it is, you know, it's going to be equal no matter what school you're at. And that, you know, Dr. Kizner, you mentioned the vulnerable students. Well, in my view, every one of our 30,000-plus students is vulnerable right now because they've been out of school for five months. They're all vulnerable. And we're going to have to determine who gets to come back, you know, for really the, the, the special instruction. So, I, I appreciate that. I appreciate it coming forward, and I, I think it's a responsibility of the board. So, thank you, Dr. Chase, for, for putting this, this together. And it's, in my view, this is not to usurp any recommendations the superintendent made, it's to refine them, and that that's, you know, our responsibility as a school board, and, and to be responsive to, to the community. I wish, as Ms. Hazard had said, I wish we could go back to school every day, but I know we can't. We can't do that right now. And I, I think we have to do the best we can, that we're able with, with our resources. Thank you.
Ms. Randall, then, then Dr. Warner.
Dr. Kizner, in, in your high school, in your middle school plan, where you have listed your exempted categories, and just in hearing what you just said a minute ago about the English language learners being from all over the county but just presenting themselves at one school, is that the thought or the plan for your exempted categories? Or were you going to put them in all of the buildings? Would there be exempted categories in all of our buildings? Or were you trying to consolidate? Just trying to understand that.
Thank you for the question. So, I do want to maybe disagree with a statement earlier. We've been planning this for months, and it has not gone out the window. I, I just want to make this short. This has been planned by educators who know education, know our children, and know the social distancing and all the health requirements. What is only holding us back to moving forward for that exempt class is the decision that a board makes. Okay? Because if we chose, which I don't think that's where I'm hearing you go, but it's not really known, to a hybrid model, then the exempt looks different because it was pretty much dedicated for one day, as, as everyone knows. So, yes, to, to, to answer your question, Ms. Randall, our objective is to evaluate the space within our school system, and that's the important part, the system, and for multiple reasons. One, to utilize our resources better, the adults. Two, to maintain, I know many of you, and I appreciate it, have visited different schools, and one thing we're all learning is that our classrooms are not standardized. And some rooms are, you know, even within a, within a building. You know, you can't conclude that this, every classroom in a building is going to have the proper six-feet social distancing. So, our, Mr. White has been working, tomorrow morning, we have a principal's meeting. First thing we need to do for the children with disabilities, go through the IEP process. And when it, when we make a determination of the, we don't want space to drive the IEP decision. The IEP decisions need to drive the space. So, once we know the number of children that would be in that exempt category, then we would go find the space that maximizes all the health standards that we have to follow. We made a statement, or it's in my plans, not, Level 1 and 2, not all English learners, not all Level 1 and 2, and not all parents, going to Ms. Healy's comment, some of them may say, "No, I, I want my kid 100% virtually." So, we again need to go out and to make a determination. Jay and his team is looking again at connectivity, and that probably would be exemption to the exemption, where we would try to get these kids closer to their school. Now, if there is a school that has a high percentage of kids that are, either have very weak signals or no connectivity, and that, again, goes to a point where there's too many children there, then we would consider more than, so, just to use Hartwood. So, if we saw that Hartwood had many kids, then maybe we would look at Rocky Run, just based on the proximity. Okay? So, yes, so, we are more than ready to move forward with reaching out to families, making determination. And then I do want to mention another group of children that, again, not everything has to happen on August 31st. Let's make, you know, I just want to make sure that that's understood. But we do have, like all of you, and, and I totally agree, it's, it's the children and it's the adults that we're concerned about their safety. And, but there are another group of children that I added in consultation with a lot of our principals and others, is that category of, determined by the principal, and the example you heard, or maybe you didn't hear, what I heard, was tier-three children. Children that are reading, literacy is a, and is, is a concern. They may not be EL children. They may not be an IEP child. They may have the best connections in the world, but they still need, and, and the other thing that I just want to mention, we are not, we are very, I use the term customizing. Maybe we'll use the word individualized. So, you may have a child that's in three hours a day. You may have another child that's in two days for three hours. You may, so, there's a family that Dr. Hummer and I have, you know, had some conversation with, speech and language therapy, which would be two, one hour through the IEP. So, it's not even where we are suggesting that there's going to be a set schedule for all these exempt categories. It would be designed around the needs of the children and the space, and not the space, we will have the space. If you think of every building in your mind, you could think of large areas that we could place children. You've seen this nationally. Some people have used gymnasiums as an example. Some people have cleared out the cafeteria tables. Obviously, North Star, North Star, North Stafford has a terrific space, so we took full advantage of that. It's just some examples.
Yeah. I, I think, I think the concern for me is just, I, and that's exactly how I envisioned, that you would have some students some days. And, and for example, I think of North Stafford and all the CTE. It has the most CTE offerings of any of the high schools. And so, if that's one day a week, all the CTE, but then you also add all of something else, I, I just, for, for me, as, as somebody who's supposed to be, you know, really concerned about the health of, of students and staff, I just want a reassurance, and, and the best reassurance for me is to just see what, what number will you have in the building, just to make sure that we don't inadvertently end up with, you know, so many people in the building that, that we practically have it half-open. So, that's, that's just my, my concern.
I think Dr. Warner was next.
I just want to say that I don't see that these, these amendments we're proposing is dramatically altering Dr. Kizner's plan. I think that what most of us are concerned about is we're trying to address the concerns that parents have sent to us and students. We recognize that the most important thing is the safety and the welfare of our staff and teachers and our students. So, none of us are opposing this plan, but we're trying to refine what it means and make sure that we're addressing those concerns of the people in the community who've reached out to us. I agree with Ms. Healy, and I agree with Ms. Randall, but the other thing is, I really want a long-term strategy because we cannot predict what COVID-19 is going to do. And we've already been told to anticipate that there could be a second wave in the fall that could coincide with the flu season. So, whatever we set up, I want to know that we could do this for a long term if we have to. Thank you.
Ms. Young, I think you were next. Yes or no?
Yes, but this is more elementary, so I'll wait until we get to that, we get to that vote. It was basically about the exempt students also. North Stafford is doing a great job. I was thinking about Moncur. Actually, I thought, Dr. Warner, you were going to ask that question. And one of the emails received that you have a large number of those kids that are. emails received that you have a large number of those kids that are ESOL, and I was wondering that is going to take up a lot of room at Moncur. So we don't only have to worry about Stafford and COVID, but we have to worry about the surrounding areas, families that are living together with their grandparents. So getting the numbers will be good to see where we are when we make these decisions.
Can I ask Dr. Kizner one more question?
Sure.
Okay. Dr. Kizner, I know that, of course, we've all concerned about the health and safety of staff, and there are teachers that have reached out to me and said, you know, please, bring the kids in. And then there's others who are like, don't. And when you talk about, like, these exempt kids that come in, do we have enough staff that are volunteering for that?
Yeah, so that's, everybody's asking great questions, so I want to make sure of that. And I do agree with the comments that, and I don't want to make it my plan versus your plan because we're like all in this together, you know? So I, I just want to make sure that's understood. So you received an email today, obviously I'm not going to mention a person's name, that basically stated, my request for health exemption was not approved, something like that. And because there are real federal and state requirements for approval. So there is, I believe, and again, once we know the numbers, because the numbers will drive the space and the staffing, that there will be a cadre of staff that are looking for the opportunity, as you're describing, to come in, and there'll be a cadre of staff as we go, if we stay more, if we do a hybrid, and, because we're going to need staff beyond 104 or 5 that we have, that would rather do all virtual. So, so we will have to obviously match, so it's a really good question that I get a little bit more nervous every day based on resignations. I know you didn't hear it today, but I was surprised what Fairfax Superintendent presented his plan to all the superintendents today. So they're looking at 10% of their staff that actually qualify for the health exemption. And he mentioned, he didn't give a percentage, but he indicated that many of the staff are singletons. They're the only ones that are able to teach what they're teaching. So that part is getting me a little more concerned as I see the resignation requests go up, because just saying you want to be in, which is great, again, if it's safe, but you also have to have the credentials for the children. So if you're an EL teacher, you know, you would work with EL staff if you've got a special ed background. So I'll be able to give you that answer probably much better on the second meeting in August, when we begin to now match the needs with the credentials of our staff.
Okay. I haven't had my shot, so I was going to, I think where I wanted to start is I do believe that our, and I just want to make sure I have this correct, our vulnerable or accepted categories, that we are not starting the year on the 31st with them in the building. Is that correct under either this plan or any plan that, our plan, which is going to be including the superintendent, of course? Perhaps we should just read the entire thing and then take it from there? I mean, I'm sort of-
My, my comment being that I am concerned about kids being in the building too early. I think that's what we all are worried about. We have Memorial Day coming, oh, sorry, Labor Day, excuse me, coming up, that if we did, like, even 14 days from there, we're already to, like, the 21st of September. And what I really would like is for this plan, for all of us, to then put this in the hands of our stakeholders. Our teachers begin to come back next week as our new teacher institute. Being given the, hey, here is where we are going, working in small groups to come up with ideas. There may be amazing ideas that Dr. Kizner and the staff will bring to us based on, to me, these are the guardrails that we're giving, that these are timelines, and then be creative, is my thought. I really would like to get those, but I think that we need some ideas of timelines, of course. Going back to my main comment, these data dashboards, we need them, we need them now, but we're not going to get them now. So we will be getting that information as time goes on. I did want to also make the comment, I know there has been, at the elementary levels, but I believe some of the other levels of allowing students, because they are going to need to get their Chromebooks, and they are going to need to get materials. Anything in either of these plans, anything that we are talking about tonight does not negate that going forward. Anybody who has talked to me, or if they've gotten my email response, I feel very strongly that our kindergarteners, our sixth graders, and our ninth graders deserve some kind of reach out, because they are the ones transitioning to a new school. I feel very strongly that they need to be, if they feel comfortable, in building or Zoom meetings to welcome them into the schools. So that's, Dr. Kizner knows that, he's heard it from me long and hard.
I do want to mention another part of the plan that was presented last week that I think is critical. Just to say we start virtually on August 31st and not giving elementary children an opportunity to learn about being a virtual learner is a problem. And we, in the plan that I presented, which I did not hear in this motion, which, again, I don't want to give any impression that I'm trying to win you over one motion over another, but there are things that I think the plan that were presented last week are critically important to make the virtual learning experience successful. And I gave a two-week window. I have great trust in our principals and staff to have the children come in, small groups, and learn how to learn virtually. And so, I, again, I don't know if there's a blending of the plans or how this works. I, I'm-
We're just doing middle and high right now.
Yeah. I just know that, I heard that from many elementary principals that, matter of fact, if you remember, I know there's been a lot of plans, but if you remember the plan on July 14th, we only dedicated a week, and on the 21st, we dedicated two weeks to make sure that we had smaller groups of children. And honestly, I think, I don't want to lose sight of the families, the parents, to be there, and I think if you look at a full day, our principals could make that work.
Dr. Chase, for clarification, your proposal is actually layering on top of the plan that we have before us. Is that correct? As opposed to, I'm just trying to make sure I understand.
I viewed it as simply making sort of amendments to what had been proposed by Dr. Kizner. So, so pushing back when we would reevaluate high school and middle school from November to winter break. Given that we're pushing it back that far, the hybrid model doesn't seem to be necessary if students are not going to be in school. So just seemed like that would streamline a little bit more. And then evaluation, I think all the dates for preliminary evaluation of academic and analysis is the same date that Dr. Kizner has in his original plan. So I was not trying to erase the plan that existed just to modify with those recommendations.
I would just ask if the motion number one can be put back up on the screen for Are there any additional questions? It appears, and I believe if I'm paraphrasing Dr. Chase correctly, that the 100% virtual will, one of the only changes is that that will last up until winter break, that the hybrid model will not be offered at this time. We will be evaluating health and academic data, which was also part of the original plan. Staying 100% virtual has been preliminary evaluation of data, extracurricular activities, and that the school day, that during the school day, buildings will be open-staffed and available to provide services for families.
Can I get a little clarification again on the extracurricular activities? Do we have to have another board action if the air clears and we can start doing things again to reinstitute that? Who's making that determination?
COVID.
The board, the superintendent, you know?
COVID.
Yeah, I think, I think it would come back to the board, if Dr. Kizner would bring it back to the board if he felt that the virus had made it possible.
Well, also, any two board members could bring it back at any time, you know, on the agenda if they so desired.
So are the kids who are now getting together to do conditioning and things like that, are they going to be in violation of some code of conduct or something? I mean, how are we going to police this?
They're not together right now because it-
Some of them aren't getting together.
Well, that's on their own, because-
Right.
-Dr. Kizner did get the, you told me that you were able to get your plan in, but the decision of the A.D.s was to not have the organized practices yet, is what you explained.
Yeah, so maybe we need to help define extracurricular, because sports is one we all recognize, but there's yearbook, there's journalism.
Right.
I mean, we, the list goes on very long.
I just don't want this to turn into be, you know, like the step one to, I know that there's been a push to eliminate stipends and stuff like that. I would really not like to see this in here, regardless of whether I vote for it or not. I just don't think it's-
Again, there's just two things I just need to say, because, you know, that would not be me if I don't say it, okay? So I'd ask you why the board feels like they need to make it and the superintendent can't, okay? I think I was the one that brought the virtual learning alternative. I do greatly appreciate it appears that all seven of you are heading in that direction. I, so, again, the thought that every time I'm having conversations with my staff, that I'm coming back to the board, is something I would ask you to think why, okay? And then, I don't know if we really want to say winter break, or do we want to say end of the first semester?
Well, we were, we were wondering about that, because if you have block scheduling the end of the semester, is it the end of the semester for the block, or is it the end of the semester for the year? Do you see what I'm saying? Like, if it's a nine-week class, then the semester is four and a half weeks in, if it's a-
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Right.
The definition of semester for some students, that would be the end of their year, in a sense, as semester. I think what, for the purposes of, I guess what I'm trying to avoid, and I can't think of the situation, but I would not, I would not think that there could be a situation where there was a huge spike of COVID, and that we really, even though we're virtual, we're not really, so one thing I have not heard me say tonight, because I learned today, don't say 100% virtual, because you're really not going to say virtual, you're going virtual. So, so some of the CTE, as we described, they may just, we're all speculating, you know, they may need to go to January 8th, January 9th. And do we then, you know, by limiting it to a date, or, you know, the winter break, I'm just, and maybe it's not a big issue, maybe it's just, you know, letting you know that, you know, I'm trying to simplify this, trying to give clarity.
I tried that, too.
Yeah. And I, you know, I think, I think what I heard some of you say, which honestly, for me, personally, it might be a sense of relief, what I'm hearing you say is that superintendent was willing to take full responsibility of stop and go, and when we go, and I still feel like that's a responsibility superintendents are doing throughout Virginia. You, as a school board, could choose not to give me that responsibility. So, in a sense, there's a sense of relief, but I think it's a sense of additional obstacles and meetings that then, when I'm asked, I need to say I have to go back to the board. And your schedule doesn't always meet our schedule. So I don't really have strong feelings about all, I just always start with a question is why? And what is the purpose of the school board, assuming, which I would say is a responsibility of the superintendent? So, again, it makes it somewhat easier, but it makes it a lot difficult, more difficult when you're dealing with it day in, day out. Because whatever decision you make tonight, I know you know it, I'm not lecturing, is that I will now be responsible and, for the day-to-day oversight of our school division. And I would just ask you, what is the motivation of that plan versus giving me the authority that I really felt like I always had? And I think when I talk to my colleagues across the state, they have. So, so again, I'm trying to reduce obstacles and move things forward for our school division in a way that makes sense that the educators could do it. So that's my only very long comment.
If I could make one more comment, I hope no matter how this goes tonight, we all remain in a partnership. I find everything in this plan is one of them, things about staying 100% virtual for the first semester, or whatever word we're using, is giving parents and our staff an opportunity to plan and to move forward. Most everything else in the plans and the times and all of those, we are still adopting, as I would see tonight, if this plan were to be adopted. And I believe the evaluation of the health and academic data is something we all agree that we need to do. So I actually hope that we see this as an opportunity that we're all trying to improve. I don't, this, this particular portion of what I'm seeing does not seem to add additional thoughts for this, for us to come back. I think we all want to be in dialogue so that we all can be the best advocates for education in our school system. And I think working together, like I said at the beginning, we will do that. And so, anyway, with that, are there any final comments? Could, could we put up the, I guess, the motion one, and I don't remember, I apologize, whether motion three was to be included as part of the motion, or is it a separate motion? No, I'm sorry.
I think it makes sense to be separate since it is relevant to both high school, middle school, and elementary school.
Yes.
Does that make sense? So if I put it as part of high school, middle school, then I would have to repeat, put it as part of elementary school.
So before you vote, I want to just make sure, could you use the term amendment? So these are, so everything else in the plan that wasn't addressed remains the same?
Your plan remains the same, yeah. Yes.
I'm trying-
Just elaborating it.
What's that?
Yes.
Yes, oh, you're the author?
Yeah.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, I have a question. Was the childcare in the plan, or is that separate? Because I want to, I want to discuss that separately.
I have that after this.
Okay, so that's not part of the plan?
I don't see that, I don't see-
No, but he was, Dr. Kizner said, if this is an amendment to the plan, everything else remains the same. So the childcare was not part of that plan that, I just want to be clear on what I'm voting on.
The childcare has to be a conversation we have before the night's over.
It's separate.
But that's, that'll be a separate discussion. Okay.
Yeah.
Do you want me to do this again?
No, I just think let's have the first motion in front of us. I'm going to give the board a moment to reread it, just to be familiar with... So as I understand it, this is to be layered on top of the recommended plan from Dr. Kizner with changes to 100% virtual until the winter break, in my opinion being the main change.
What exemption?
Madam Chairman, if I could add, if there's any conflict between this and the, I'll call it the July 21st plan, this amendment will be controlling. Is that correct? Thank you.
Everybody who... All those in favor of motion number one as presented on the screen right now, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right. Can we pull the board, please?
Dr. Chase?
Aye.
Ms. Hazard?
Aye.
Ms. Haley?
Yes.
Ms. Hollabow?
No.
Ms. Randall?
Yes.
Dr. Warner?
Yes.
And Ms. Young?
Yes.
All right. Is there a motion? Would you like to go ahead and do motion three or would you like to wait till after the discussion of motion two?
We can go ahead and do motion three. This is simply a request for... Well, not a direction for Dr. Kizner to provide us with information about exempted categories at the August 11th meeting. So motion that exempted categories proposed for in-school instruction will be clearly defined and presented to the school board at the August 11th meeting for approval. The plan for exempted categories for in-school instruction shall include, but not be limited to, a maximum number of students permitted at any school site at any given time to be calculated as a percentage of the available space.
I will not be ready by August 11th, so you could... Just so you'll be a motion that will not be followed.
Is there... What date would be a reasonable date?
I remain not argumentative, but remarkably confused. You just approved a plan that says exemptions, okay? I just shared with you that we have to have IEP meetings, we've got to reach out to parents, we've got to do all this stuff. You're saying in two weeks, come back. That's... I say this respectfully, it's going to sound offensive. None of you have been school administrators, none of you have, well, Susan's exemption, has taught in schools. What you're asking is unrealistic, okay? So if you want to look for a date, I could go two weeks later. Even that would be unrealistic because I am not going to have my staff be forced to have all these means. I already told you, it was not all starting August 31st. So again, I'm just being honest with you. You could put in a motion to say the 11th, and I'm just telling you, that cannot be met.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Randall.
You did make mention, though, that the 25th, a while ago in our earlier conversation, you thought would work, but now you're not really...
I still mean, yes, I think that's obviously better than the 11th. But are we saying, again, I just need more direction, maybe that's what I need. Are you saying that exemptions cannot happen until we're given this information?
No. No. At least, I can only speak for myself, but my concern is just that I want to be sure that we don't have so many people in a building at one time that the reduction in risk that, you know, for me, it is of great concern that we are saying that the most vulnerable can be in the schools, but that nobody else... That it's not safe for anybody else. And so I understand from looking at the slide last time that this idea of risk mitigation and low, medium, and high levels of risk. So I just want to be sure that we don't inadvertently create a high risk for this vulnerable group because we aren't paying attention to how many people are going to be in the building.
Ms. Haley? Oh, sorry, Ms. Young, then I'll come to you next, sorry.
Just to follow up, Dr. Chase, this is to protect the staff as well, in terms of vulnerability to the students as well as the staff. And I'm assuming that you will have this information before you would want to implement anything. Is that not correct? You would need this information before making the decision about who goes into what school.
I'm not arguing, I'm not disagreeing. I'm just saying that I think I've been very clear in all my presentations. Goal one has always been goal one, the safety of our staff, the safety of our students. I'm just wondering out loud, in front of anybody who's listening to me, the why that the board feels that we would take steps to make goal one not come true, okay? So, and I already indicated that it's a process to get the exempt children back into school for a period of time. It's not... Remember, our staff does not come back to August 10th, okay? All right. This, you know, I'm just trying to put things in a pragmatic way to you, okay? IEP meetings require a teacher to be there, okay? We have hundreds, 13% of our kids have IEPs. 10% of our children are EL. I don't know what percentage of one and two, but it's a high percentage. I'm just trying to put it in the terms that we live in every day, okay? And I'm asking you respectfully, as board policy people, to understand that in this room and this superintendent, we understand your concern, but to create a timeline that is unrealistic is not helpful.
I just have a question.
Ms. Young.
I just have a question for Dr. Kizner. Maybe a misunderstanding is ESOL students, are they considered exempt?
There was a question. What's your...
My question was, are ESOL students considered exempt? And I said...
Yes, yes. Level one and two, basically, non-English speakers or just early English speakers.
Okay. So one of... I'm not sure if everybody got the email, but one of the email was from a teacher that was concerned that one particular school will have 200 and I don't know how many, and do we have the space for all of them? And if we add 504s and IEPs? And I think we have the numbers. I mean, I don't think... I don't think it should be difficult to get the numbers and say, hey, these are the numbers and which building they're going to be in, but I don't know, sorry.
Madam Chair, if I might. Having been to 504s meetings and IEP meetings for both of my children's careers in school, depending on the complexity of what's included in the IEP, sometimes these meetings can take hours. This is a pretty tall order for Dr. Kizner and our staff.
May I suggest that the board request a report or an update on number of people reached, something like that? That's just like, to me, a tracking sheet. I'm not sure... I'm not sure I need staff to wait for us to approve the categories. That doesn't seem to me to be something I'm willing, right now, to slow down any progress in this area, if that's the perception. I think just a report on numbers of students impacted. Also, to me, many of those, that information, to me, and I mean it like report, like we had, you know, 500 meetings or 200, just very basic. But I think what I'm really looking for, for me in that data, is what other resources do we need? Because I think some of those requirements are going to require us to deploy resources. So for me, that's really what I'm looking for in that data. And I don't... I'm really looking for truly a report, not exemption, something like that, a report that helps us say, wow, here are some areas we are not meeting well and we're going to need to deploy. Is that something that would be helpful to...
Yeah, if the board feels comfortable, I think it's September 8th is the first... When do we meet? The second Tuesday? I forget. We seem like we meet everywhere.
Is that correct? Yes. We might. Yes, the 8th.
The 8th. Why, if the board, to go what Ms. Hazard said and what Dr. Chase is, we could give you a sense of the trending data of, and the locations that we believe these, not believe, where we're planning to have. We may need to update you on a monthly basis because it will be fluid. You'll have children come and go. So if we... I think that would be a more realistic timeline.
Ms. Hazard?
Madam Chairman, may I have a follow-up question?
Sure.
After... Yeah. Thank you, Dr. Kizner, I appreciate it. I don't think any of us are questioning the exempt categories and what they're going to be. We're looking for just numbers. How many students do you anticipate at each school and what those exempted categories are? And part of it is, as Ms. Haley, or as Ms. Hazard said, we need to know if we need to deploy additional resources, if we have the facilities to accommodate these students.
No, your points are well taken.
And just a number, just a report is all we're looking for.
I think this is very helpful data.
Ms. Hazard? Just a follow-up. My recollection was there was another category as determined by the principal. Was that one of the, you kind of checked the other blocks?
So there's, yes, well, the three categories plus a fourth is the children with disabilities through the IEP process, level one and two, EL. I'll just say no connectivity, just to make, lack of access. Now, for the high school kids, there's CTE option, although I will tell you today, Dr. Lane did indicate the exemptions that were offered for spring of '20 for certain CTE licensures will be waived. So there may be greater relief, but...
Great.
No, no, it's good, but I'll just make this comment. That might be in the educational world if these students are pursuing a career. We still want them to be qualified, you know, when they go to a job market. So, you know, I'll just make that comment. I don't know enough about it to be very specific as an example, but Dr. Lane did indicate today that the state, the Secretary of Education approved his waiver for CTE hours for certain licensures. Okay. And then the other one, Ms. Haley, is yes. Those students that principal working with their staff feel like they needed to be in for a level of instruction.
And I think that's very important, but I am concerned about the new students coming into schools, such as the rising sixth graders, the rising ninth graders, anyone just coming to Stafford County, that, you know, the principals may not know the families. So I think there's some way we need to integrate that into these considerations. Because it's, you know, right now, I think our principals very much know their school community and their families, but the new families coming in, you know, may not have that luxury of being known and their needs being known. So somehow, when we're looking at the, you know, the termination on a school-by-school basis of the needs, we need to address how do we, you know, learn about the new people coming in. So if you could include that in the report as well, I would appreciate it.
Sure.
Because I think that's important. That's the other category. And that is how we are going to do our best to meet the community needs.
Okay, that's no problem, thank you.
And I just want to also mention that in my district, we have two principals who are brand-new to their schools. So they may not yet know that. And so I want to make sure that that's taken care of as well.
All right. Could we put motion three back up on the school, up on the board? I...
You got something?
I'm trying... Well, I think really the motion to me is that the board... I personally am not sure that we need it by a motion, but that is going to be the board's decision. I am really looking for more, a report on these exempted categories presented in really basic data and what needs, you know, what needs, may we not be meeting? That's really what I'm looking for.
Chairwoman Haley, Chairwoman Hazard, can we amend the motion to change the date from August 11th to one that's more feasible for Dr. Kizner?
I'll second it if it needs a second.
I need to know from Dr. Kizner.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Can you see my... Can you hear me?
September 8th. September 8th, right?
September 8th. Okay. Motion to change the date from August 11th to September 8th.
Do we want to take the word approval out? We're really not asking for approval.
That's not what I...
We're just asking for data.
Okay. Sure. I'm taking the word approval out.
Let me see if I can just...
Give her a minute. 50 seconds. Forty.
Let me try this. Are we ready? I move that the superintendent will present a report on exempted categories at the September 8th school board meeting.
It's been moved and seconded. Could I just say, I'm not going to add it to the motion, that we also be updated as needed as the year continues? Because as we all know, at least in the IEP process and children are identified throughout the year, we don't want to lose, you know, sight that those numbers may be going up or not. And again, focused on resources, I'm looking at my fab members saying, please look at that. All right. Does everybody understand the motion?
Yes.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. I know we've gone from motion three, now let's go, I believe you have another motion regarding elementary school.
Elementary school.
Two.
And again, this is basically just layered on top of what Dr. Kizner brought to us last week. On August 31st, all students will begin the school year remotely. The superintendent is directed to conduct an in-school pilot of the hybrid plan approved by the school board on July 14th to begin no later than September 21st. An analysis of the health and academic data will occur three weeks after the start of the pilot program to determine if it is feasible to expand the program beginning two weeks later. Student participation in the pilot is to be determined randomly from families who have chosen the hybrid model to give families an equal opportunity to participate. Families participating in the pilot must certify that they have not traveled to viral hotspots in the two weeks prior to the start of the program. Teacher and support staff participation in the pilot must be voluntary. And this is separate from the pilot, but just to the extent resources are available, a monitor should be assigned to each school bus to check the temperatures of students before they get on the bus and make sure that students keep their masks on and stay in their assigned seats.
All right. It has been moved and seconded. Any... Dr. Chase, I will give you first comment as the motion maker.
So, and let me say, September 21st, everything is contingent on COVID, right? Everything is contingent on what the data is looking, health data is looking like at that time. There's a very real concern that we could be in this situation for a couple of years. I hope not. But a very real concern that we could have a generation of students who are elementary school students who are virtual for multiple years if we never try to get them back into school. And really... And really wanting, we also recognize that this hybrid plan isn't something you can roll out in a day, that to just bring everybody into the building all at once would be extremely difficult. And we don't, don't even know if it'll work. So we, we think it might be good to, to just pilot and see how it works and find out if we are going to be able to move in that direction.
Can you read the motion again?
Can we leave it up?
Ms. Young, any comment, since you were the seconder, I believe?
Okay, can I just?
Since you were the seconder.
I, I just need to point out again, we just spent way five minute hour concerned about any kids being in school. Now, we set a date, directed, begin no later than September 21st. No, what I have is benchmarks to look at when it's safe. We're just going to say, September 21st, regardless of what's happening in Stafford, regardless of what's happening in the state, we're going to have a pilot hybrid plan. I'm just looking for some level of consistency. Okay? So could somebody help me understand, so I can explain to folks why that date is locked, but there's no requirement to look at, if that date makes sense? There's a requirement three weeks after it starts to see how it's going. But there is no, I, I need to get a rationale justification why we picked that date when we just talked about we shouldn't have, I'm concerned about too many kids in a building, I'm talking about at-risk kids, this, but now we set a date of September 21st, which happens to be my brother's birthday, so I'll remember it. But, so I'm just, would like to know how we, how we manage those two, which I think competing messages.
Sure. I, I think, I think I can try to answer that, and I, I'm not wedded to particular dates. I think the thought was, your July 14th plan had a hybrid plan. I think September 21st is because we figure staff needs to all get the virtual plan going and be comfortable with it. And we feel like people with, who've been traveling related to Labor Day, that that needs to sort of, to settle down. But indeed, I mean, if it's, if, if there's just crazy amounts of COVID going on at September 21st, but if we don't plan at all to start the hybrid plan, how, or when does it start?
I have no problem with the planning. If I read it literally, and maybe I'm reading it literally, I need to read it inferentially. But if I'm reading it literally, you're making a motion that regardless of whatever's going on, September 21st, we have a hybrid plan. I mean, to begin no later than September 21st. No, I'm reading it right in front of me.
I think, I think we can modify it to...
That's what it says.
I, I understand, but it also says an analysis, so that would mean that...
No, analysis of the health that will occur three weeks after the start of the pilot program.
I understand, but she also said, when she was reading, that it would depend on the health data that was at the current time. And in your plan, you even have September 21st with a hybrid option to begin October 6th.
I think I can ease, make a suggestion that may solve the apparent dilemma. Rather than conduct, why don't we say plan? The superintendent is directed to plan an in-school pilot to begin no later than September 21st. So if that planning is in place, we can certainly move forward if the health data supports it. And I, I read something promising in the paper today. I mean, that doesn't mean it's going to be the same tomorrow or next week. But I agree with Dr. Chase, if we don't, if we don't have a plan to, to start at some point. Now, it's, it's not going to be anything reckless. I think it's very clear by the, what appears to be unanimous support for this virtual start, that there is concern of everyone on this board for the health and welfare. But we're also concerned about having some potential for getting back to, to in-school. So if you can plan it, then we can look at it, you know, our first meeting in September, and, and have a decision then. Look at, look at the data then. If there is some crisis that appears, you know, in Stafford prior to that, then of course we're going to relook at it, put it on hold. But at least there'll be a plan in place, because we recognize that there is a lot of work that's going to be involved in that, including the buses. Now, this is just elementary, so it's a lot less complex than, than putting the middle and the high school in there. But I, I think if we say to, to plan it, then that there should not be any confusion or potential conflict.
I appreciate that clarification, but I would at least, would hope that the board acknowledged that we have a plan for hybrid. What have we been talking about the last couple of months? Is there something, well, I obviously did a very ineffective job explaining hybrid, and our staff that came up last week and explained the seamless transition and the schedules. So the answer is, we, I, I think, having a goal in mind, which was always my plan, that I had goals when we would start, looking at data. So I don't really see a lot of difference in that notion, except I did react, but I do hear a change. My plan always indicated that we would look at things before we would implement. And the way this was worded, we were not looking at anything. We were starting on September 21st. End of story. If you, that's how the motion was written. Now I do hear a change to that motion, so that's my reaction. I don't think there's a great difference in the plans, except I think our plan, and I say my plan, but it's really a plan well thought out by the educators, had checkpoints before we put things in place. And I just wanted to make sure the checkpoints were in place.
Thank you, Dr. Kizner. I just had a follow-up question in terms of the plan. Having a plan is great, and thank you all so much for all the work. Is there a timeline to evaluate the plan, like a pilot? If you have it in your plan already, then we don't have to do it. Like, is there like, a time period that you have, some kind of?
Right, like, we have, we have not seen, we have not seen anything about this being piloted. The impression I get is you would evaluate it, and then you would be ready to go and start with everybody going into the school. And it may just be a communication problem, that I just haven't been clear on how this gets rolled out.
I think if you look at, I don't have the PowerPoint in front of me, but if you looked at the July 14th PowerPoint, it has, for every level, different ways we evaluate. Okay? So, again, I don't have it in front of me, so I can't speak to it.
You have the valuation on the 21st to determine if hybrid model 100% remote option should begin on October 6th. That's what you wrote. And then on September 24th, the superintendent will announce his decision.
Right, but what, what hasn't been clear to me was, would the hybrid, the hybrid has always been presented, my impression, and that doesn't mean it's correct, is that if we're starting hybrid on September 20th, or October 6th, or whatever day it is, that we are going to bring in and half of an elementary school on Tuesday, and the same half again on Thurs, Wednesday, and then the other half is coming in on Thursday and Friday. But we haven't tried just a small subset to make sure that, to figure out what the problems are going to be. And, and maybe that is in the plan, but it wasn't presented to the board that that was what was going to happen.
So this is, this is a different clarification. So you're not even saying, follow the hybrid plan. You're saying, up, up, see, I...
I, I think what we're saying is we'd like a test run. All the models that we're introducing to our community to educate their kids this year, we've never really used. The hybrid plan's never been used. The, the virtual plan's never been completely rolled out. What we're saying is take a small cohort of students, test the hybrid plan over a two, three-week period so that we can see what the logistics are, what the problems are, if it works, if there's, what we have to do, if it costs more money, if we have to, to put more resources in, just so we have some data that we can use to say, yeah, this is going to work. Or, hmm, we need to go back and rethink a couple of these things.
Okay, so, okay, this is helpful, but if you really want to know how it's going to work, I feel like it should look like what we would do come second semester, if we're able to go back. Because if we're going to have 12 to 14 children in a class, and now we're going to have six to seven children in a class, it does give us a little information, but I'm surely not going to be able to generalize from that experience. We, we did talk about transportation test run. So I'm not, again, it just gives me a different way of looking at how we're going to make a conclusion if it doesn't look similar to what we would do if we were able to go to a hybrid model. That's just my, my...
So what I, what I, what I was envisioning was you might, the pilot might be all of first grade. Or the pilot might be all of second grade at a particular school. So that you would indeed have those 12 children alternating days. But you would get to see, how do they move through the building? How does this work? That, that was all, so.
Ms. Hollerback and Egan?
Can you put the motion back up, please? There was a bullet point that I want to ask about. Teacher and support staff participation in the pilot must be voluntary. What does the plan B for any of the schools that don't have teachers that want to volunteer, that don't have support staff that want to volunteer, that don't have bus drivers assigned to those routes for that particular school that don't want to volunteer? Are we going to have, you know, inequity amongst Stafford Elementary School and Anne Moncur based on how many people are interested in this pilot program? That doesn't seem very fair to me at this point. What's, what's, what's the, the plan B if we don't get the volunteers?
I think, I think if there are no volunteers, then you can't run the pilot, can you?
So...
Count one.
So I think that, basically, we, we do have a pilot right now, I think. So we have summer school. Summer school has been going on all year, right? But it's just in specific schools. So I, I see what Ms. Egan's point is. If we don't have the volunteers, we can't run the pilot. But we have something to look at right now, you know, but...
Madam Chairman, if I may? I see the pilot as a luxury for, for the school system. It's a chance to do a trial run in a small number and to see if there's, are any issues that we need to address, or if there's any additional resources we need, you know, what we can change to make sure that it works. But I would not want to require staff, teachers, or support staff to participate at that point. Because it, it would be a pilot, and I would say, if there is a school that we don't have volunteer, teachers or staff, support staff for, then we just would not have the pilot there. I mean, I've, I've received a number of emails from, from teachers and support staff that have indicated they wanted to go back. And I, I would imagine that there will be volunteers, maybe not at all the schools. But, you know, that, that's just going to be dependent on who's there. I, I'm not going to be in a position to dictate that, you know, people must participate, particularly if this is a pilot. So I'm okay with some schools not participating in it if, if we don't have the volunteers there.
So I have a couple of quick, a couple of questions. Does this pilot have an end date?
Three weeks.
Three weeks? Okay. So you do have in your motion, which is a huge safety concern. So we want to talk about equity. And you're saying to take temperature checks before a child gets on a bus. Some parents are not going to be able to be at the bus stop. Kid should be participating. Kid has 101 temperature. What do we do with the kid? I think, again, I'm doing this as respectfully as I can. Obviously, some of you got, over the weekend, made some decisions. That's fine. But the temperature check before the bus is not going to work. Okay? If the thing that we would like to see a elementary pilot program, Mr. Superintendent, that's what you should say.
Dr. Kizner, you took the words out of my mouth. What my thought would be is to insert into, and I'm sorry, I don't have your slide from the last time, on the slide, when you had your slides up about the timeline for elementary, if, could poss, oh, there we go. Maybe it is inserting there for you to, for we would like a consideration of whether a pilot program is feasible or necessitated. Because suppose, hopefully, by the time we get to October, we should have some additional students in the building of the exempted categories. So that may or may not be the kind of pilot we're looking for. But I am willing at this point to at least just amend to say for you to consider a target, that's not the word, a pilot program with fewer students if necessary. Because we're all going to be learning at this point, and that may be something that we want to consider. I'm not sure today I'm going to go one way or the other of whether it's feasible, but to put it as a tool or a consideration. Is that helpful?
Yeah, it's helpful, but I just, again, Ms. Hollerback asked a question if I was aware of this. I would have maybe offered you something else to consider. As you take teachers offline to now to be the hybrid teachers, we have now children that have been assigned these teachers. It's not, I'm not opposed to what you're trying to do, believe me. I like the notion of learning by doing, not putting anybody at risk. But I do not think, respectfully, this is well thought out. Because again, if you would have just said, Mr. Superintendent, we would like a hybrid pilot program, then I would have been more than happy to work with my staff to give you a hybrid pilot program that would consider all the variables that one must consider to have most children virtually, having some children exempt, and now asking staff who are going to have their student caseloads, where parents and teachers are, are counting on them, to say yes. Yes.
Oh, no, no, you're just letting her know I was going to ask.
I know, if you want, because you, you had the teacher here.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
You had the educator here. So I, again, I, I know for the public that, thank God, he's not happy. I'm actually very happy. I, I remain happy. That's, happy, happy is my middle name.
Let your staff know that you're happy.
I, I'm just thinking, again, I think we're all, we're all got the, I think we all have the end in mind, the goal. I'm just not feeling like, you know, again, Irene, if I could use you twice, I just feel like tonight, we're adding some things that maybe some more deliberation should have, with an understanding that you want a hybrid elementary program. That's for three weeks. And could you bring back in a few weeks what that program will look like? Yes.
Okay. Madam Chairman?
Okay, hold on. Ms. Randall?
Okay, so what I'd like to try to do then is, is looking at your elementary school plan. And you have the health and academic data analysis will occur on September 21st to determine if blah blah should begin on October 6th. And on the 24th, you'll make your decision. Isn't, so what I guess I, we're trying to see is, on October 6th, the same challenges that you just said, from what we're asking of hybrid, would still be the, the challenges on that day. So what I'd like to see is, could we use, instead of going a hybrid model necessarily on October 6th, could we use a conglomeration of the idea of what we want as a pilot? Again, so we're not full-on hybrid, but just able to pilot. Because I mean, like Ms. Hollerback said, even with the, what if a school doesn't have anybody? Then even with you having October 6th as a hybrid start date, we may have an elementary school that just stays virtual, essentially?
So, and I appreciate... So, and I appreciate the question, and what my plan, I hate keeping the word my because a lot of people helped work on this plan, but I am, but it is, as you got all the letters, adopt a superintendent plan, so I guess it became my plan, is that if we went with this plan that you're referring to, everybody who asked for remote would go on remote.
Right.
There would be no pilot.
Right.
And honestly, and I know the staff's not going to like to hear this, and there would be no volunteer, okay? We would be looking for people to do more of the virtual, because we would have a larger group. So as Carrie Neely brought up last week, we try to create a seamless transition. We wouldn't, but my concern now is that I just need to work with our staff, because the beauty of our transition from the spring to the fall virtual is that teachers are going to be assigned, they're going to have groups of kids, and now if we take out those teachers, nobody's going to be waiting in the bullpen to wait for this assignment. They're all going to be working come August 31st.
Right.
And now, I now have a situation where, again, depending on how large this pilot is, that we're going to have some teachers that have these kids virtually, and now are for three weeks are being pulled out to teach hybrid. So that's.
Potentially that, okay, so October 6th was your hybrid start date, and so we're saying that instead of, you know, hybrid for all that want, we're just saying, can we just even back that down to a few? And we're not saying after three weeks, stop it. If at three weeks it's working, we could potentially add to it your plan of hybrid. I mean, obviously, the health and safety and those things have to happen as well. Always keeping in mind that staff, you know, is volunteer, not voluntold. But I'm just saying, instead, because your hybrid plan would start on October 6th, I'm sorry if I'm very confusing.
Right, but it would start for everyone.
Right. And that we're just saying, rather than making it big, if we start small, we can make some adjustments and then grow it.
No, no, I understand what you're saying, but I'm, and I'm not doing an effective job of explaining it. The teachers that would be doing the hybrid will be teachers that will be doing the virtually up to the day the hybrid starts, and then go back to the virtual, if we go back to the virtual for that group. So I just need to work to figure out how we minimize the disruption of those children that either the parent said, no, I don't want my kid in a hybrid, or two, depending on, again, how we do it, if we do all first grade, as an example, those first grade students, teachers are going to have, you know, all the first grade in that school, okay? And if we just said those who wanted the hybrid, and let's just use the number 70%. So 70%, and then what percent of that 70% want to be participating in the pilot? So now I got to pull those teachers out, and now I got to figure out what am I doing with all those other, the kids that those teachers teaching virtually up to that point.
So can we just, can we just change it to, we would like you to pilot this in whatever form is.
And present to you the pilot plan.
Right, right. I mean, I don't have a problem with that. And then with respect to temperature checks, I don't, I just, you know, my impression is that we may have quite a bit of staff that needs to be reassigned in some way, and it would seem to me that one way that some people could be reassigned is to act as bus monitors. Now, do they need to take the temperature? Perhaps not, but I think it still might be good to have a bus monitor on every bus for an elementary student.
No, I don't disagree, but then that kid that has a temperature, and mom or dad is not there to take you home, then I got a kid with a temperature that, so our plan never had temperature checks before kids entered school. Okay? At the building, we had the isolation rooms, and then we're going to work very hard to get the parent to pick up their child. So that's our concern, that kids would be, have a temperature check with no supervision if they were found out to have a temperature.
Go ahead, Ms. Ealing.
Actually, that concerns me more than anything I've heard tonight. And full disclosure, I have one child, she graduated nine years ago and never rode a school bus to school. She rode one home a couple times with friends, but she was driven to school every single day. And as a parent, I would be very concerned to think that if I sent my child on a school bus, that there could possibly be a student with a temperature of 100 riding that school bus with my student. As a bus driver, I'd be concerned. As a bus monitor, I'd be concerned, because I think we need to come up with a contingency plan, or you can come up with a contingency plan, someone needs to come up with it, that we have a plan in place if there is a child. I mean, I'd much rather know that there's a temperature of 100 before a child gets on the bus than once they get to school, because by then, the damage is done. They've been on that bus and exposed all the other students and the driver to, you know, any potential illness that might be there. So I'm not asking for an answer tonight, but I think it needs to be addressed.
Well, I, I don't have an answer.
And I don't know if we do it through social services. I mean, I think it needs some review and consideration.
I don't have an answer, but I have a comment. I believe.
Can we get an answer at some point?
Yeah, I believe the messaging is, no one should be sending their kids to school with temperature, because parents who drop their kids off in their car may have a kid with a temperature. Parent who has a child walk to school may have a temperature. So I'm totally agreement that we don't want a temperature, a kid would, nor do we want staff to be there with a temperature. However, I'm going back to the safety of that child who may have a temperature, and in fairness to some parents, they may not be aware the child had a temperature at that time, but may have a temperature, and we don't have an adult to get this kid safely back to their house, because maybe the parents already went to work, okay? Who knows what the reason is? At least when they're at school, we have a safe location for them to be isolated until we can make the proper arrangements. And that would be true for the kid that gets out of a parent's car, or the kid that walks. So our plan was never, and I don't know if I don't want to put Colette on the, but if she does want to add to it, she's got a very nice mask on.
Dr. Kizner, I'm just asking that we come up with a plan.
Yeah.
And the plan, you know, can involve other entities, other services, but not putting our students and our staff at risk on a bus, regardless of if it's a pilot or a hybrid or whatever we are.
In talking with the Health Department about the screening process, 40% of the students, 40% of the people who test positive of COVID-19 do not run fevers. So just basing a fever as a potential for COVID-19 is not accurate. Children go on buses now currently before COVID-19 with temperatures of 100 for whatever reason, whether it's because parents don't check them before school, they've given them Tylenol before school. I have no idea how many times in my career I've had a kid come into me at lunch because mommy gave me the red stuff, which is Tylenol, okay? Children being put on, having, expecting the bus driver to read the thermometer, they're infrared thermometers, if the ambient temperature in the bus is not the same as the outside temperature, that thermometer is not going to be accurate, and we should be using touchless thermometers. So that's another issue. And on top of that, again, what are we going to do with that child that's been standing on that bus because mom dropped them off and had to leave because they were late for work? And now we have a child with a fever and nobody at home to receive that child? I think that would be totally unconscionable for us to turn around and say, go home, Johnny, and to register that temperature at that point in time. Parents need to be responsible enough to be checking their children themselves before they leave the home to make sure their children do not have a fever and are not sending their children to school sick. We need to make it a statement of not sending them to school sick and not just with fever, because symptoms of COVID-19.
With the plan, it was my understanding that there's supposed to be a health check done before you send your child to school, and that you're supposed to register that on an app? Is that true?
Not necessarily on an app. We were just asking them to do the health check. We've been piloting the screening with a Google form with Head Start, and a lot of parents are not filling it out for us. They're not compliant. So there is a difficulty with getting parents to comply with doing these screenings.
Okay, so then, all the more reason for a pilot, and all the more reason for trying to figure out what you want to come back to us with in terms of how we handle it if parents don't fill out this health screening form.
The problem is also that.
There's a hundred, there's a remote option for parents if they can't get this right.
Well, that's, that is true. The screening process is what we want them to try to do, and have them be proactive parents and check their children at home. And that's part of the parenting process. If we're screening them as they get to the building, then we can isolate them and get them the proper care that they need. But just checking a temperature on a bus and sending a child home is just not appropriate.
Madam Chairman, if I may, I did not suggest that we send the child home. What I suggested was that we have a plan, and that plan may involve calling social services, it may involve Stafford County Public Schools, picking the child up in some other vehicle. It's, what I'm looking for is a plan so that we don't put a child on a bus with other children and with staff. So let me be perfectly clear, I never suggested we just leave the child there or send the child home. What I ask is for Dr. Kizner to develop a plan to deal with that. And I understand if the child gets to school, we can have the isolation rooms, but as a parent, I would not want my child on a bus with someone with a temperature. And you mentioned 40% or 60% don't have a fever, but to me, that says 40% do. And it's not just COVID. I mean, we're going into flu season.
No, it's not, right.
There's all kinds of potential illnesses that are out there. And if we are truly looking at protecting our students and our staff to the maximum extent possible, then I would think we would do everything we can not to put a child, you know, or an adult in a situation with others that we know has a high temperature. So there was no expression on my part to leave the child there, to send the child home, it's to come up with a plan to address it, and preferably in a manner that does not put that child on the bus with the other children on the bus, with hopefully a monitor on the bus, and with the driver. And I believe Dr. Chase's suggestion was that the monitor take the temperature before the child gets in the bus, so it wouldn't have any thing to do with the temperature inside the bus. So I think we all, we're all very tense right now. This is a very, very hard for everybody, and, you know, I'm trying to, I'm trying to listen, and I would ask you to do the same. That's all.
When you're saying it wouldn't be a temperature problem with the, that the bus, the aide would be taking the temperature off the bus, the thermometer has to be in the ambient temperature for 15 minutes to calibrate to that temperature before you can start taking temperature readings.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. I thought you said because it was on the bus. I didn't understand that.
Yeah, because if the temperature on the bus and the temperature outside are not equal, it's going to be inaccurate.
I would just, again, respectfully allow us to do our job.
Right.
We get the idea you want a.
Which is what I asked for. Come up with a plan.
We want a hybrid plan, and you want everybody to be safe, we're all in agreement, and we want some ways to evaluate. I raised a concern about, it's a concern that I want to keep you informed about, that when you take staff out of the virtual, then we still have children waiting for that teacher, okay? It's not going to be 100% match. All first grade kids are going to say, yes, I want to be in a hybrid. Remember, the trend, I'm saying 70, but honestly, if we did the survey today, I think it would probably be more like 50/50. More, the trend was parents wanting to go, you've seen the emails, how do I get back, how do I switch from hybrid to virtual? Which is another thing for the public. We're going to go back and survey parents, and I think that might have been one of your motions anyway, but we're going to survey parents sometime in the fall, without doing it right away, just to get a sense if we are able to open up a second semester, where we would virtual versus hybrid.
Okay. What I'm going to do at this time, Ms. Hall, could you put up the slide that was from, not that one, the one from, yes, the elementary school? At this point, trying to hear what everybody has been doing, I'm going to pass.
Can I start by just withdrawing my motion? And then that way, you all can come up with whatever motion and clean.
And do we have a proposal for preschool?
Okay, let's do one thing at a time. We are beginning to become way in the weeds. You all said you were ready for tonight, and I said we would go till 2:00 in the morning. So I would really, let's see if we can work on elementary school. My suggestion would be to take the slide that is currently before us, which was in the prior presentation, that talks about, let me see, about the analysis, just to include that the 100%, I'm sorry, wait a minute, I had it, now it's gone, talking about that the hybrid model, comma, to include consideration of a pilot program which gives an additional tool in the superintendent's toolbox. I don't have the expertise to say which it should be. I am willing to let the superintendent decide, seeing where we are with whatever the health data is, is it better to do a smaller group or not? I can't tell you, as we have all talked about, I would love a crystal ball, but I don't have it, neither does Dr. Kizner. I would just like to add that as a tool in his toolbox, that giving a signal from the board that a smaller pilot program is something you and your staff could consider. That's as far as I'm willing to go right now.
Can I ask one question? So on here also, it says, all students, virtual instruction will begin on August 31st, but then you have the face-to-face orientation the week of the 24th and the week of the 31st. So will they be in virtual instruction and be coming into the school for that?
So, yes, so, yeah, it would be the 23, 221 or 23, depending on what model parents signed up for.
Can I just make a quick comment? First of all, one thing I really appreciated about the plan was that this idea that it could merge seamlessly with the hybrid plan and the virtual plan, that they were essentially working on the same timeline. So, you know, I just think that it would be nice to have some data that we can actually do the hybrid plan, that we can move the students in. It doesn't even have to be four days. It doesn't have to be Group A and Group B, it could be just Group A. And if enough students assigned to a particular teacher, and that teacher was willing, then we could just look at these in small increments in each school to see how effectively it works, and if we need to apply more resources, and if we're going to be able to do the, there's just a lot of questions, because we've never done this before. And we just feel strongly that if we could look at some information to see how effectively it works and how the logistics come out, and if we can actually teach children in that amount of time with all the other things that have to be done, that's our goal.
Okay, so Dr. Chase has withdrawn her motion, and I have assumed the gavel from Mrs. Hazard, who would like to offer another motion.
For the board's direction, bullet three of the elementary slide number 15. Health and academic data analysis will occur on September 21st to determine if hybrid model slash 100% remote option, comma, including a consideration of a pilot program should begin on October 6th. Those would be the words I would add.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just have one comment. I would like that analysis to be shared with the board.
Of course.
Thank you. It doesn't say it, so.
Dr. Kizner, would you like to offer anything on this?
I've, no, I'm fine, thank you.
Okay, all right. We're ready for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed?
No.
Okay.
Dr. Chase?
No.
Ms. Hazard?
Yes.
Ms. Healy?
Yes.
Ms. Hollerback?
Yes.
Ms. Randall?
Yes.
Dr. Warner?
Yes.
And Ms. Young?
We're in a vote. Okay. Okay.
Director, what do you have?
Thank you.
All right. I believe that I heard a question asked about Head Start and preschool. If I am incorrect, I am not trying to prolong the meeting, I'm just trying to make sure I've hit all categories. Was that correct? And was there a question?
That was me, Madam Chairman. We've addressed the high school, middle school, and elementary school, and unless we're going to include the preschool in there, which I have no problem with, I think we need to address it, because otherwise it doesn't technically fall in any of those categories.
If we could bring up that slide.
If we could bring up that slide.
Dr. Kizner, I received an email from somebody asking about whether we were still doing the peer modeling. Is that still part of this proposed plan? Okay.
Yeah, so, thank you. Just a little commercial. So I know people have been getting questions. We don't have every FAQ answer, but we surely have a lot, so the comments that Ms. Young started with, many of those I know are on our FAQ, so I would, again, keep referring people, and the volume is pretty significant. So we're, have a great team, once a week we update it. But the answer, yes, Kathy Massey confirmed that there would still be the peer models.
Can I ask a question?
Sure. Ms. Young?
Will there be any orientation for the little kiddos, K-2-3? Like a week or two week, they come in, small groups, meet their teacher, so that they don't think that little, I'm sorry?
He couldn't hear you completely, but, but yes, there is-
Well, this is, this is the thing-
I think that was already discussed before the last motion.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
That it was August 24th and August 31st.
Orientation for the little kiddos, okay. I just got a text.
And I apologize to Ms. Young, it's-
You need to tell yourself that.
I'm going, I'm going in a couple of months.
So please let them know, because they think that I'm, I speak loud through my mask to you, so.
I do a great job reading lifts, but I'm having a hard time, yeah.
Ms. Healy, did you follow up? I thought I saw a wave, sorry.
I just have a question. As I understand this, this will be determined after the collaboration is done, but I have a question with respect to the staff assignments. You know, we've heard from a lot of staff that have, you know, very serious concerns about going back into the classroom, particularly at the preschool level because of the age of the students and the, just the nature of the job. I mean, you can't really, it's very difficult to keep these, you know, children separated. And whether there are other issues as well. So is it your plan to require staff to go face-to-face in this circumstance? Or will there be volunteers requested?
Yeah, so, that's a great question, especially for these preschool children, that social distancing is, like, you might as well not even have preschool if you got to social distance. I would ask, and Miss, Carrie and I have talked about it, I think this is where we sit down with the staff, we get a sense of how many staff members feel comfortable. And then, this may be the exception to what I said, we may bring our kids in based on the number of staff that feel comfortable doing it. This is when the face shields are probably, for the adults, much more effective than the masks. You know, there is a point in time, and I think we're all saying the same thing, and so I really do appreciate everything that you guys have shared tonight. There is a point in time, you've seen this in different, you know, publications and social media, where the restrictions make it much more restrictive, that, you know, it may, it may not be the best thing, the hybrid, for groups of children, if they, you know, it's interesting, I was thinking about this the other day, six, seven months ago, we were talking a lot about, which we always should talk about, bullying behavior. You know, we talked about kids on the bus bullying, and kids in the classrooms bullying. But now we're all learning how important social emotional is, how often people are saying the social emotional contact. So the question that we, I don't know how we gauge it right now, but we gotta figure out a way to gauge it. If we have to restrict greatly the interaction children are having among themselves and with the adults, is that having an adverse effect to their emotional well-being? You know, I just think these are new conversations that will, will take place, especially for the younger children. I mean, the notion that you can't sit on a carpet circle and have a teacher read to you is not how kindergarten, first grade should be. But it's one, and I could take this side also, it's still probably better than having to learn through a screen time. Okay? So, so anyway, I bring it up for the preschool ones, this would be an example, because I do think, even though, remember, the governor, we never really had Phase Two. No, we went from Phase One to Phase Three quick. We never really got to experience Phase Two in Virginia, and definitely Stafford. Phase Two is the younger kids, is the preschool kids. But I, again, just to make a long story short, I, yes, this would be one where I would ask our elementary leaders, preschool leaders, I mean, to sit with staff, make a determination who feels comfortable doing this, and then make a decision on matching that with a number of children, you know, just by the nature of that position.
Okay, so Dr. Kizner, does that mean a teacher who has concerns about being in the face-to-face situation will not be required to do so in the preschool? And the reason I'm asking this is that, you know, we've, I think the board has expressed the concern about putting teachers as well as students in a potential precarious situation by our vote on the virtual start for elementary and high and middle. And in preschool, with respect to the legally mandated preschool, we may have certain restrictions, but Head Start, which is a tremendous program, I support it wholly, but that is a voluntary program. So I don't think it's reasonable to put our certain staff in a position where they are mandated to be in the classroom where other staff are not, particularly where there's no legal requirement.
And again, just so to remind you, I know you may not have the PowerPoint in front of you, but Slide 13 for preschool did not talk about hybrid. It gave many options for instruction, recognizing the concern that everybody's discussing. Face-to-face was one, home visit instruction, virtual instruction, home learning packages as example. So this is taken away, we never, in the plan that you had last week, Slide 13, speak about going either a hundred percent or hybrid for the preschool, acknowledging that there's gotta be other ways of offering instruction. So again, just want to make sure that's, that's known.
Okay, are there any other concerns or items that we need to address this evening? I believe-
Sorry, childcare?
I believe-
Give me a couple of childcare.
All right. What, is there a-
I thought there was a question, Ms. Healy, asked about childcare. Did you ask your question?
Well, I just want to make sure it wasn't part of what we were voting on this evening, because I'm not prepared to-
Oh, you didn't want to discuss it tonight?
Well, no, I mean, we can discuss, I had asked for information in advance of the meeting, and I got handed something when we, when we walked in. So I need to look at this, I'm not sure it answers all my questions, but, you know, I can certainly be prepared to address it at the, at the next meeting.
Do we need to vote to approve the preschool plan?
If we have not, I guess I'm- That's where I was going, was I believe we have one more motion to-
Well, I don't mind voting on it, because I really would have to address, vote against it because of the, the options include the face-to-face, and I am opposed to requiring any of our staff to participate in a face-to-face, you know, situation if they have concerns about it while all the rest of the staff are not required to do so. So, just wanted to make that clear. I mean, we can vote on it or not, but if we, if we do, because of that. And I, and I understand and I respect what you're trying to do here, Dr. Kizner, but I think this is treating this group of teachers and this group of support staff differently from all the other staff in the schools. And again, I go back to Head Start is a voluntary program, and with respect to the preschools that we are mandated to do, I would like to look at what is the legal requirement with respect to that, and how is the state addressing that in this state of emergency?
Yeah, and again, I'm not disagreeing with you, this summer, we ran a hybrid face-to-face model, teachers volunteered to do it. Again, I just want to restate, restate that the plan never states hybrid or virtual. This has been fully thought out already, and I would, again, a lot of this health mitigation and social distancing requirements just would not work for that young group, and we recognize it, but I also want to let it be known that at the, I don't know why we forget it, but the Melcher Center, we've been, we ran, maybe still are, a preschool, a summer program, not a lot of kids, but we had adults there. So I definitely agree, and I think we are in a total agreement that for that age group, children will be taught by adults that feel comfortable being in the building.
Right.
Rising star, sorry, it just came to me.
At this time, I'm trying-
Just a question, would there be numbers that we would be needing for that, or no?
Well, I had a whole list of questions that I asked Dr. Kizner about, and this was middle last week, and I appreciate you probably just now got this information, that's why we got it this evening, and I had the clerk send that to the board. So I, we're talking about minimum a half million, up to one and a half million dollars of expenditures, and I'm just not prepared to take a vote on that at this point.
Yeah, and I'm not asking you to take action, I do want, if you mind, just quickly, I did, just real quick, had a survey sent to all the superintendents. You might have, if those who listened to the governor's press conference today, you heard that, I forget, over six hundred million, I thought, releasing new CARES Act money to localities. So I do think there are ways, so childcare is a real issue. Again, I could turn to Patrick, but you remember the, or Chris, somebody, or I could make up a number, but, but we were a few hundred people, was it either three hundred or seven hundred, I don't know why.
Six hundred staff.
Six hundred and ten, okay, somewhere between three and seven. Six hundred and ten indicated that childcare is an issue. And as much as we may have different opinions about childcare support, I would just offer that, based on what I already shared with you, the number of people that are leaving, and teachers, and bus drivers, and cafeteria employees, and so on, if they don't come to work, we have an issue. And I was told today that it meets one of the requirements for federal leave, it's not, was it, a few hundred dollars a week they would get by, if childcare is not provided? So I was just curious, was my thinking an outlier? And, you know, again, depending, so seventy-five school systems at least responded, which, again, that's not bad for four days, having it out there. And, again, forty-one percent indicated that they will provide, the division itself will provide childcare, and thirty-three percent said the division's partnering with an external organization to provide childcare, and a quarter said no. And then, I was interested in knowing, right now, how are they considering the funding? Although I, okay, anyway, twenty percent said they plan to partially offset the cost, twenty-four percent said they plan to cover the entire cost, and fifty-six percent, no. I mentioned the CARES Act because what I did hear, so the governor's press conference was after the superintendent's meeting, so I did hear superintendents say that if there was more CARES Act funding, they would look at that to support the childcare, so I'm not sure if these numbers would change. But anyway, I would just offer that this is our employees, and everything that we've been talking about, either virtually, pilot, bus drivers, depend on our adults to be present. And so I just raised that.
So I just want to raise, at some point, I know that, I've heard from, from many people about individuals who may not have as many hours with these new plans as they would have had in the past. And you've said that, that you will reassign people, and so at some point, I would like to know how people are being reassigned. And one of my questions is, could some people be reassigned to provide childcare, to, to reduce the cost of childcare? So just something to, to think about.
Yeah, and I know some building principals are already having that conversation, so when I know more, I'll be happy to share with, with the school board. Anyway, that's, all I have is what you have in front of you. I'm not asking you to take action, but I know that we have a three-on-three meeting, you've asked me to give you an idea for staffing needs. The turnaround usually, at least for the first round of CARE Act money, was relatively quick, and to get it at least considered by the county, you know, it would need for you to give me some direction, if this is something that wants to be considered. The last slide I forgot to show you is-
We're seeing, oh.
The rates that the YMCA offers. Again, you may be asking, because I asked, why don't they have a daily rate for one, two, and three? And the reason is they gotta properly staff, they need to know who's coming, so that's why they don't. So anyway, that's, I just want to get something in front of you for you to be thinking about. And I learned-
Can you, can you keep that up for a minute? The last one you had?
Oh.
I have a quick question. So, do we have some numbers for how many staff need childcare now that we're going virtual? I know we're gonna have people in the building, and is there any room for parents that have exempt children that work on the front line that need care? Is there any wraparound service for everyone?
Translate, Dr. Chase.
Is there any wraparound service for everyone? And is there numbers? I don't know, do we have any numbers as how many people are virtual? And do we need any more help for the staff? So the people that are working, how many, how many of them need childcare? You know what I mean? And do we have some room for those that-
Yeah, I don't, so the question is, would we have room available for non-school employee children? And what I would say, based on your actions tonight, probably survey again, because this will give us more updated information. So our surveying has been built around the July 14th plan, so the numbers may change.
And when you're, we talked earlier about exempt categories, so if we're going to put children into the school to have childcare, that needs to be considered as part of the total number of people we have in the building. So keep that in mind.
Yeah, right now, the Y is committed to six, six, six sites, but they could increase if there's a greater demand, anyway.
All right.
Thank you.
If I could summarize, I believe that the consensus of the board is that, Dr. Kizner, you are to send the July 14th plan forward-
And never go away on the weekend.
To, I know, to the super, to the Board of Education, I'm sorry, I know you have to send it somewhere for approval with the comments made tonight, which, and you'll move that forward, and you'll let us know if it's endorsed and proved. I don't know, I, they've gone back and forth of whether they have to approve it or not approve it, but I think, I know you have to submit it.
Yeah, I have to-
Will we be, will you be able to meet that time deadline before the 30?
Yeah, I'm, I'm in good shape. We're in good shape.
All right. If there is nothing further, I know the next meeting of the school board, there is a three-on-three meeting this Thursday, there is a FAB meeting on August 10th, and then the regular board meeting on August 11th. If I have forgotten one, let me know. If not, thank you all, and have a good evening and stay safe.
Thank you.